Judy. Carl.
Here.
Weiner. Murdock.
Here.
Eliffson.
Here.
McKenzie. Negro. Lauren Negro.
Um, she's online, but it looks like she's having a problem connecting to audio.
Thank you. Messinger.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Houfal.
Here.
Frannick.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Stendor.
Here.
Berlin.
Here.
Miranda.
Here.
Gussie.
Here.
Micah. B Tech.
Here.
Huber.
Here.
Nineteen present.
Uh, next we go to be, uh, reserve a moment of silence and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. We need a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Kathy Schutte. Bill?
Motion.
Seconded by Bill Messinger. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're not going to public hearing. On the Ashland County budget. Three minutes per person, thirty minute limit for all public comments. Who's up first? Lawrence?
I'll make a motion that we go into a public hearing.
Oh, okay. Motion to go to a public hearing. Mike. Seconded by Mike Berlin. All those in favor say aye. Posed or motions to a public hearing. Okay, who's first? Public hearing.
Good morning, uh, Chair Fallon Supervisors. Um, before you finalize the county budget, I'd like to respond to a statement that, oh, first of all, my name is Glenn Carlson. I'm the town chair of the Town of La Pointe. I'm also a taxpayer and a voter. Um, before you finalize the town county budget, I'd like to respond to a statement made when your finance committee was considering an allocation to the Town of La Pointe Police Department as part of your budget. The statement was if the Town of La Pointe can afford to buy a ferry line, they can certainly afford to provide their own law enforcement. Well, I'd like to clarify that. It does appear as though the Town of La Pointe will be purchasing the Madeline Island Ferry Line. But we're not doing this because this is a great investment and we have extra funds. The town is doing this only as a matter of economic survival. It would be as if a private party who owned a large part of Highway thirteen between Butterdun and Ashland and had let the public freely use it was looking to sell it, maybe to a buyer who'd put up toll gates. Well, at least they couldn't move the road to the east coast as some remote buyer of the ferry could do with the vessels. I expect this county board would feel duty bound to buy that stretch of Highway thirteen regardless of the tax burden. At this point, the town doesn't know precisely how much of a burden buying the ferry line will put on our town's taxpayers. What we do know is that we will need to borrow one hundred percent of the purchase price at today's high interest rates. What we also know is given a choice between affording an optional local police department or an existential ferry service, our residents will choose the latter. In fact, tonight, our town board will be considering the police budget for next year. Most likely, it will only provide about seventy percent local coverage overall. The other thirty percent will be entirely the sheriff's constitutional responsibility to cover. As I have said before, we are willing to discuss a fair payment for the town to afford twenty-four seven coverage. Our last offer, a reduction of thirty thousand dollars, was met by a counter offer of zero from your finance committee. We expected that the law enforcement committee would subsequently be taking up the sheriff's budget and make a reasonable counter offer. But as far as I can tell, in defying your own policy, the law enforcement committee never voted on or even discussed the sheriff's budget. So now the town will have no choice but to continue to pursue our legal remedies and at the same time to reluctantly add even more to the plate of the sheriff's already overstretched deputies. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Pat, I think you're up. Okay. Anyone else for a public hearing? Anyone online? Last call for public hearing. Hearing done, we'll go on to public comment period.
Hey, we need a motion to, I'll make a motion that we, uh, end the public hearing on the budget.
I'll second the clearances.
Motion made by Clarence Campbell to end the public hearing, seconded by Kathy Schutte. Any discussion?
I just have one comment. There are some internet issues out there this morning, so has anybody heard anything for somebody that wanted to speak and you think they wanted to? And they just can't get on our Zoom?
Well, they either have to be here or be online.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to second. End the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Public comment period. Any motion? Wanting to public comment?
Public hearing is different than a public comment.
Morning, everyone. Um, I just wanted to speak a little bit about, uh, one of the agenda items today with regarding the, uh, money to borrow for a purchase of a groomer. I'm not saying to do it, not to do it. I'm just here to give you some more information. Um, they did what, when they first looked at doing this, they went to the bank. The bank said no. Um, that's concerning to me. Uh, I sat in meetings and heard the budget. I don't feel they can financially afford it. They, the finance, uh, the treasurer admitted it's a gamble. I've even, there was comments, one comment made at the meeting, if we can't do it, uh, the county will bail us out. I don't think they're taking it as seriously as it should be. I asked them all, um, if it was their personal business and they were financially responsible for this money, would they still do it if there was their business? And I did not get an answer from anyone, which is also troubling. Again, they admitted it's a gamble. The... They do get grants, but they have to spend the money to get the money. It's not just we give you grants and you can pay for this out of there. I really feel that this, this board should, uh, um, see their budget, see their financials and before making a decision of that amount of money, um, especially like I said, when the, the comment has been made in more than one meeting, the county will bail us out. Thank you.
Anyone else for the public comment period? Hearing done, we'll move right along. Need a motion to... Motion to close the public comment. We've got a five A approval of the October ninth, twenty twenty-three county board minutes. Need a motion?
This is Huber. I'll make a motion. Every seven minutes is read.
Motion by Rich Huber.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Louis Carl. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We go to five B approve bid for courthouse repairs.
So we sent out about, we sent out over twenty RFPs to different, uh, corporate, different contractors around state of Wisconsin, the state of Minnesota. Uh, we got one back and that's for the company you see here. Uh, building restoration out of Minneapolis. This company specializes in historic buildings. Um, let's see, their, their bid here is a lump sum bid of nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars. Now, we'll cover almost everything that needs to be done. Um, I do have a representative from the company on Zoom that's able to answer any questions you may have and sort of explain what they're gonna do. So, um, Carl, if you could talk to them a little bit?
Absolutely. Thank you guys for having me on. I'm happy to answer any questions as they come up. Um, we responded to the RFP. You guys were looking for, um, repointing, stone patching, stone replacement, just exterior masonry items, um, and a courthouse to be restored. Uh, like Dan had said, this is exactly what we specialize in. We've done a lot of courthouse around the Midwest, um, with an emphasis on historic masonry. Um, we've been out there a couple of times and, um, we feel that our proposal is, um, addresses the needs that you guys are looking for.
Pat?
At the bottom of the bid sheet, there's a list of things that it does not include. It specifically excludes a list of things. Um, and so my question for you and the administrator is in that long list of things that are excluded, are there any of those things that the county still needs to consider doing at some point in the near future if they're not done as part of this project?
Yeah, so one of the things that was talked about on sites, um, and we don't have an area of expertise in this, but the sloped shingled roof, um, was talked about as being in need of repair at some points. Uh, I can't lend a recommendation on to if that's true or not, but that was one of the things that was talked about outside, uh, on site and not in our work scope.
Like to point out, that's, that's an issue we did not know about until they came and looked at the building. So we do have extra money budgeted, um, for this and for another product, for another thing, um, which I'll get to in the budget, but there is extra money available to cover that portion.
Uh, what would be the impact of deferring this, uh, preventive maintenance another ten years?
Uh, the building would fall apart. I, uh, I'm surprised to say, problem is we have water leaking into the building.
I'm asking the contractor.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, absolutely. So that what I see from the building is that if you continue to delay this project, uh, the backup wall, water will seep into the building and the backup wall will continue to deteriorate, leading to, right now it's just exterior issues, but I think that at some point you may see some structural issues, uh, if you continue to let water into the backup wall and continue to deteriorate, um, the structure. That's where I see it as huge issue.
We do have water coming into the small courtroom already.
Mrs. Laura, I have a question. Um, thank you. Um, down in your references of the building restoration, uh, there's projects that are in there and some of them have gone over and one of them quite a bit. Can you explain those, um, increases or the final contract amount?
Uh, absolutely. Do you know what one, uh, specifically you were looking at? Uh, so I can lay in our, get dive into some more detail on that?
Um, I see the one, it says church added more work as we progressed. Um, I'm just...
Oh, Bethlehem Lutheran in, uh, Minneapolis? Yes, that was a, that was a owner-driven change order. So we were contracted for a base bid amount of nine hundred and seventy-three thousand. Um, and as we were on site and as we were pointing out things to the owner around the rest of the building, um, they decided to add on more work to our work scope. So we call that an owner-driven change order.
All right, and then in the other three, they're, they're, it's, it's not huge, but when you're dealing with millions of dollars, um, you know, seven hundred, there are a few hundred thousand dollars can be big. Are, are those just... A little more detail need to be done? Are those, um, product?
Yeah, no, I get, I get what you're saying. A four percent, a four percent increase on a million dollar project is still a lot of money. Um, what we found with chain or change orders, and I have a, uh, we've actually been asked this question a lot, and so we have some statistics on this that I can send out, but, um, for those projects, those were again owner-driven change order things, you know, with, with Bowman Hall in particular, that was a, you know, they were con, we were contracted for a base bid amount of brick replacement and so without a unit cost. And so as we went around the building and decided, uh, continued to repoint, we found additional brick that needed to be replaced. And that is where the change order comes from, an owner-driven change order, I think, but, you know, that's part of restoration. Sometimes you find some unknowns. And that's why in our contract or in our proposal to you guys or the RFP, we stated, you know, a contingency should be included because sometimes you do find some surprises, uh, on a building like this. Of course, it's restoration. So that would, that would be my explanation for that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Kathy?
To the contractor, I have a question. This is Kathy Schutte. Um, is your work guaranteed and for how many years?
Yes, correct. We do have a warranty. I believe I attached that warranty under my RFP, but if not, I can. We have a five-year workmanship warranty on anything that we, um, that fails.
And the reason I'm asking is because this building does need to be preserved. It's on the national historical registration and there are not many buildings like, left like this anymore, so it does need to be fixed.
No, absolutely. And that's why, you know, when, when Dan was talking about our qualifications, you know, we deal with national registry buildings, um, multiple times a year, every single year. So this is not the first time we've dealt with something like this and we share your opinion that a building like this in the national registry should be preserved. It should not just be left to fall apart and, um, be demoed for something, a new building. We, we want to preserve the history.
Thank you.
Bill?
Um, how soon are you going to start and how long is it going to take you to finish?
Uh, in our response on the RFP, we have a estimated, um, schedule. Um, we would like to start, uh, in early spring, um, with demo work. Masonry, masonry is always temperature dependent. So you cannot, you cannot have, um, we're going when it's below forty degrees, but we can do the cutting and we can do sealant work, um, in early spring when the temperatures are still cool. Um, we've estimated this project would take about four months from start to completion. Um, and so we would like to get started early in the spring, um, and go from there.
Uh, my second question, are you interested in doing the roof project and how much do you estimate that to be?
Uh, we do not do any roofing in-house, um, and so I would, our company would not be able to do a roof restoration project like that. Uh, I don't know how much roofing project would be, but I did contact a few roofers and I had one that was interested. Um, I can send the contact information to Dan or whoever, uh, but like I said, you know, I'm getting out of my realm of expertise when we talk about roofing.
Yes, John? Yeah, do you, my name is John Weiner, District Twenty. Do you have somebody to overlook the project when you're look, when you're working on this, as far as, um, taking pictures and, um, making sure everything is done correctly? Because I do some of that myself, so I was just curious if you have somebody hired or do we have to do that?
No, so we actually have multiple people. So I would be involved from the start of the project all the way to the end. I'm, I'm not leaving you. I'm not, you know, pushing this project off, so I'll be on site, taking pictures, making sure quality is, um, of the utmost, uh, or quality is taken care of. We also have superintendents that will be on site, um, checking quality, and we also have a full-time foreman that's on site every single day, um, that is checking quality as well. So there'll be about three, plus our safety director, so three or four people that are checking quality, making sure the work scope's getting done correctly, um, items like that.
So everything will be documented and, um, looked at then?
Correct. So we out, at the end of the project, I'll send you guys progress photos and things like that, making sure the joints are cut properly, making sure everything's repointed. You know, just showing the scope of the project, not only so you guys can see what we did, but then in, you know, down the road when people want to know what kind of project we did, they'll have photo documentation of that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, next we're gonna need a motion.
This is Lauren Negro. I'll make that motion that we accept this bid to, from, lost your name on here.
Motion approved by Laura.
There we go.
Seconded by Mike Berlin. Any more discussion? We need a roll call on this. All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, guys.
We've got a five C, resolution R eleven, twenty twenty-three, fourteen fifty-four, eight counties with Indian reservations.
This is a resolution we pass every year. Uh, it gets us roughly forty thousand dollars in grant money.
You want the floor? Go ahead, Gary.
I would make a motion to approve the resolution twenty-three, fourteen fifty-four.
I'll second Gary's motion.
All right, we have a motion by Gary, seconded by Kathy Schutte. Any more discussion?
Mike Stark, does this include the reservation on the island? I don't see the, the, the Town of San, you know, called for service and things. Uh, the Bad River owns, uh, that reservation on the island and how is that paid for? Yes, no?
Uh, it would cover the entire reservation property.
So it covers the reservation on the island?
Uh...
I mean, it says, you know, in the document, county law enforcement, um, Bad River community needs. And then I don't know what page number it is, but it shows, uh...
You know, I'll second the Stark. I'm gonna call the sheriff up and let him answer this question.
Just so that the, the board knows that the reservation on the island should be as part of Bad River.
Yeah, let me, let me call the sheriff up and have him answer that question.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the second, right? Any more comments?
Yeah, we're having a discussion.
With Dan. They're still discussing it. Dan's calling the sheriff.
It does say in there that, that two hundred acres on, of Madeline Island. Yeah, says the two hundred acres include on Madeline Island. I thought I remember reading.
Yeah. Lawrence?
Yeah, if you go back in the packet, uh, the, the page-headed county tribal law enforcement program plan, says the Bad River Indian Reservation is looking at a hundred and twenty-five thousand acres. On the southern shore of Lake Superior, this includes two hundred acres on Madeline Island.
Any more comments? We have a motion on the second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We've got a five D, resolution R eleven, twenty twenty-three, fourteen fifty-five, a resolution to authorize the hiring of W, MWK LOC for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Dan?
All right, well, um, for those who don't know, MWK's, um, Mike and Steve are financial consultants. Um, and generally we've agreed that we should, should continue having them next year. They've done, they've saved us more, a lot more money than we spent and they've helped to streamline our entire accounting system. There's still more work to do. And I guess Supervisor Negro would like to take over for me.
Go ahead, Laura.
Hi. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we pass resolution R eleven, twenty twenty-three, fourteen fifty-five.
Ron Stender will second that. We have a motion by Lauren Negro to approve. Seconded by Ron Stender. Questions?
This is Bill. Um, how much is it costing us a year?
It depends on how many hours we do, but it's roughly around twenty-five thousand.
Pat?
We hired them, um, several years ago after our board chair contacted our state legislatures and said, look, we're, we're essentially broke. Something that I had suggested the county look into was developing a financial plan at the time. The county did not have a financial plan. The city developed one in twenty thirteen, which was extremely helpful. So the state was willing to give us twenty-five thousand dollars towards developing a financial plan and through that money, we hired, um, these two individuals. Um, and it was at a time where we didn't have a plan, um, at all, as far as I could tell from being on finance starting out. So they have been immensely helpful in developing a plan, but also updating software, et cetera, so that we better understand how we're spending money and, um, you know, looking at things long-term. So things have been incredibly better since we've hired these two folks. The other thing I will point out is that at the time, we would have liked to have hired a finance director full-time, but we simply didn't have the money. In fact, a few Januaries ago, when it came time to pay bills and we didn't have the tax receipts yet, we had to hold off on paying some things because we didn't have the money. Um, and so these two folks, um, I, I don't think we can overstate how helpful it has been with their experience in, um, county and, and city government in terms of making the changes that we have had here. So, um, they've saved us far more than, um, it costs us to have them. So I'm more than happy to support this.
Any more discussion? Hearing done, we'll take this up to a vote. All those in favor of passing the resolution?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Resolution, we have a five E, resolution R eleven, twenty twenty-three, fourteen fifty-six, a resolution authorizing the use of state appropriate funds.
So, um, I don't know if everybody saw the paper this weekend or Friday. Good story, by the way, Tom. Um, so, you know, we've been talking about the tax settlements in Sanborn for a long time. Um, and so the governor's request to the joint finance committee to disperse the three point six one three million that they appropriated was to give Ashland County two million, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. That makes us whole for the entirety of the past and, and, uh, revenues for this current biennium, missing tax revenues for this current biennium. Uh, because we have, so I'm suggesting that we put that money into an interest-bearing account until, until the county needs it, if ever, hopefully never. However, that we do pay the two chargebacks that the Town of Sanborn has issued and will issue out of this money. That way, we don't have to put it onto the... That way, we don't have to put it onto the general levy as an additional item. The rest of the county taxpayers don't have to cover these chargebacks, and then we use money the state gave us to do that. It saves everybody money and it's using money that we've already lost, so and recovered.
How much money are we talking about in chargebacks?
Well, the first chargeback is a hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-two cents, that one's due February fifteenth. So we'd have to, we have to send that to the town regardless, the D O R's already issued that chargeback. They'll, and that was for pay tribal members back. Paid their taxes under protest. Uh from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and eighteen. As soon as the town gets the money for the chargebacks, they'll be paying tribal member, those same tribal members taxes paid from two thousand and eighteen to twenty-two. And then when that second chargeback comes, their plan is to pay off the loan they took from the public land commissioners. But this, do it, do it this way, I mean, it's again, it saves the taxpayers money and it's using money the state gave us.
Bill.
Dan.
The the county, this is Bill, um the county already paid the school and the towns.
Right.
And everybody their share.
Yep.
So we've, we've done that, so now the the town is going to reimburse the individuals that paid the taxes.
The illegal taxes, yes.
Yes.
Dan, there's not gonna be, they're not paying back the loan though, right? The town of Sanborn isn't getting enough to re to pay that whole loan off, so that's gonna still be outstanding.
They're gonna pay part, my understanding is, and of course, the town has to make the ultimate decision. That they're gonna use the money from the second chargeback to pay back the loan.
Liz.
Motion approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, Liz, seconded by.
Kathy Schutte.
Kathy Schutte, discussion?
This, this is Bill again. Seeing the property was assessed or was based on the equalized value. The county is going to have to come up with the money to pay the schools and the town and everybody else this year yet, right?
No. No.
Um well, how was it, it wasn't taken off the equalized value, because the equalized value was set at the end of August.
Right, so so the school, we we don't have to make the school up any money, there are, they've already set their levy based on the current equalized value. So they're, they're gonna get whatever their levy is, the town is gonna pass their levy based on the current equalized value.
Yeah, but the what I'm saying is, the state set the equalized value for all these districts in August.
Right.
And this never happened until after, so this year.
No, the proprietors have taken off the tax rule last in December of last year. So they're not, they weren't taxed on January fir, as of January first, they were off the tax rule.
Any more discussion?
Going forward now, the town of Sanborn budget. Has not been reduced, and that the Bad River is going to kick in. The amount of money, so on a one-year contract, they're basically gonna offset the the taxes that are no longer. Being paid by the Native Americans that were being taxed, so it's gonna budget it, the budget will balance with the Bad River making up the deficiency, if I've understood this correctly.
Uh that's my understanding for the current year. Next year is another story, uh I know the town is actively talking with Bad River about future payments, there's only been an agreement for this this one time. And, you know, I'm sure they will come to some sort of resolution. But again, we don't control the tax levy for the town. And we, we have no influence on what the town and the tribe do together, that's between the two of them, we have nothing to do with it.
Any more discussion? Very none, are you ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, thank you. We go to five F, resolution, R eleven twenty twenty-three fourteen fifty-seven. A resolution establishing compensation to be paid to. All non-represented employees of Ashland County in the calendar year twenty twenty-four.
This is McKenzie, I'd move to approve.
Mike, Mike Stark, I second.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Motion.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to approve, any discussion? Pat?
A question first, on the agenda or the agenda, it says a resolution to provide a loan of fifty thousand to the Ashland County Snowmobile.
We're not on that item.
I know. Um and then the other one is the tri-county corridor, are they two separate entities, or is this just kind of using terms interchangeably?
Mr. Kenny, we're not on that item yet.
I'm sorry.
We're on half.
We're not on that one, Pat.
We're, we're on the pay raise for county employees.
Sorry.
Pardon?
You have a first and a second.
I know, any more discussion? Very none, all in favor of approving that resolution, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We've got a five G, resolution, R eleven twenty twenty-three fourteen fifty-eight, a resolution to provide a loan of fifty thousand dollars to the Ashland County Snowmobile Alliance.
Okay, so Mr. Kenny, to answer your question, the uh Snowmobile Alliance and the tri-county corridor are two separate entities. Tri-county corridor operates within Ashland, Bayfield and Douglas Counties, and it's completely separate from the alliance.
Matt?
I guess what I'd like to do is I'd like to make a motion to table item G, uh the loan for the fifty thousand. Uh based on the information we heard, uh so that we could get some more details to find out. Uh whether this is something we really want to do or not, so I I'm making a motion to table.
This is Lauren Nagro, I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second to table, discussion.
I'd like to hear from, does Ron have some information that you can update us before we table it?
We already have a motion in a second.
Now we have discussion.
It's open to discussion.
Okay. I I don't think you can discuss a motion to table.
You just have to vote, all right.
All right, I guess we gotta vote this up or down. All those in favor of tabling? Roll call, please.
This is to table resolution, R eleven twenty twenty-three fourteen fifty-eight.
And a yes vote is to table, a vote, no vote is not to table.
Carl?
A yes vote is to table the motion, the a resolution, a no vote is to keep debating it. No.
Weiner? Murdick?
Yes.
Elifson?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Negro?
Yes.
Metzinger?
No.
Campbell?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Kenny?
No.
Who Fall?
No.
Franek?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Stendor?
No.
Berlin?
No.
Miranda?
Yes.
Husey?
No.
Micah is absent, V Tech?
No.
Huber?
Yes.
Schutie?
No.
Nine no, eleven yes.
So the resolution is tabled.
So we're done with that?
Yes.
All right, we'll move right along to five H, resolution, R eleven twenty twenty-three fourteen fifty-nine, a resolution authorizing the forgiveness. Of a loan to the tri-county corridor commission.
Okay, so this is a motion that passed the finance committee, but because the county board made the original loan, we felt that the county board should make the final decision. When there was the, tri-county corridor had their embezzlement back in two thousand and nineteen. They obviously ran out of funds, so Ashland County, Bayfield County and uh Douglas County helped. They each gave them ten thousand dollars to help them operate for the season. Um Ashland Ca, Bayfield County and Douglas County have not asked for the money back and considered a grant. Um it was originally going to be a grant from Ashland County, but there was a motion. Uh here to make it a loan, uh so now the request is to forgive that ten thousand dollar loan. So we'll take any questions.
Okay, so I I don't know anything really about the tri-county quarter and the snowmobile alliance in terms of how funding works or how they work together or separate, so. On this loan, so the tri-county quarter comes in from the west, goes over towards Walmart, then swings back towards York Dock, so there's very little, no, you're not talking about that? So when I look on, when I Google list, that's what I'm seeing there, so my my question is, how do you guys work together? And in light of the last vote where we tabled looking at a groomer, when you came to finance, you said you were gonna get a good deal on that groomer from Swiderskis and having bought farm equipment, I know if you're getting a good. Um but that's what we were told, so I.
Different items.
What I don't understand is, is if we forgive this, does that have an impact on the ability to take care of the trails and in particular grooming those trails? These are totally.
Totally separate.
Can I explain? Okay, the alliance, okay? Which I'm representing here today, the alliance uh does all the snowmobile grooming within the county. Including the corridor. Okay, and the alliance gets paid. For doing that. The corridor commission goes from Ashland to Superior, okay? It's split up into three uh sections for Douglas County, Bayfield County and Ashland County. So with the alliance equipment, we groom the corridor and get paid for that from them. But they are a separate entity, they are not part of the, you know, they are not the alliance.
Bill?
Has um the tri-state county corridor made any payments? If it was a loan, were they supposed to pay so much a year or?
No, they just had to pay within three years.
How many years?
Within three years, so they still have another year to make, to pay. Yeah, I, and to add to what Supervisor Stender said. The snowmobile trails tend to be only used for snowmobiles, most, most of the land is private. And a lot, a lot of the private landowners don't want A T Vs going through.
Yes.
Or or other forms of recreation, because they're distracting to them and interfere with their working their farms or whatever. The corridor is an old railroad track. That was donated to the corridor commission by the railroad. And it offers more, every kind of recreation you you can think of. The run, in fact, it runs right behind my house, and people are not only riding snowmobiles, they're running, they're riding A T Vs. Or side by sides, whatever you wanna call it, riding horses, the uh whistle stop runs there, I mean, people are doing everything possible on that corridor. Uh so it's a completely different entity, and has a completely different purpose.
Yeah, and I I've lost track, do we have a motion on this yet?
No.
All right, I I'd like to make a motion to approve and turn this from a a um a loan to a grant. And I'd like to point out something Mr. Grady was just identifying, this is a key avenue for tourism for our county. Um we get a lot of different um people coming here to use that quarter, they either come by A T V, U T V, snowmobile. Um and even, as been pointed out, horseback, um we don't have a lot of opportunities to have a direct tourism spot like this, and and I think it's worth supporting. And it brings money into our community and would would ask that we support this.
Thanks, Matt, motion by Matt.
I'll second it. I'll second Matt's.
Seconded by Kathy Schutte, Liz.
Sorry, if we do not approve this, um where would they get the money if they are having problems paying?
It's not, this, be for their fund balance, and they're not having much problems paying. Uh we're just asking that we, that we do the same thing that Douglas County and Bayfield County have done. And again, as Supervisor McKenzie said, I mean, this is a huge tourist draw for the county. And it'd be better for them to put their money into maintaining the corridor than paying us back.
George? Um it's on my understanding that there's been discussion that uh Bad River Tribal Council may be interested in extending the corridor across that part of the county, is, can you update us on that?
Um yeah, the, so Bad River allows the quarter to go from the casino through Iron County. Um however, they, there's a talks of them opening up before the casino in Ashland. It's my understanding that that would have to go to referendum before it could happen. Um so I don't know when that's gonna happen. But I I hope for the next year, when they have a new tribal councils up. Which they'll have after tonight.
Yes, I just got one question, who who maintains that, then do they maintain it themselves, or do they have it subcontracted out, or how does that work to maintain it?
Uh the corridor commission itself maintains it.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else?
The alliance does the gro, snowmobile growing. Right, and the corridor commission takes care of it when it's not snow.
Go ahead, Laura.
Could we recognize Pat Dousk and have him explain a little bit more?
Uh is that a motion?
Yes.
This is Pat Kenny, I'll second.
Recognize Pat Dow to a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Hello, um so the tri-county corridor commission and leased the trail from the railroad. No money exchanged, the commission was formed by Ashland, Bayfield and Douglas County, so it is part of all three counties that commission. And the point, in the counties, each county appoints three representatives to it, I am currently the chairman of the tri-county quarter. We contract out all the work to be done on the trail, so. Brawl River Riders takes care of summer and winter maintenance of the trail uh from Brawl to Superior, from Brawl to two forty-one is. In the summertime is uh Trails North A T V Club, in the winter is Bayfield County Snowmobile Alliance, and then. From two forty-one to Ashland, it's the Ashland Snowmobile Club, or the Ashland County Snowmobile Alliance has contracts to to do all our maintenance on them trails. The money that we received sits in our account because all of our grants are reimbursable grants, so we have to spend the money to get the money. So that's what the money was for, was so that we could have the money to spend to get the grant funds to do it. Uh we went for and got funds from uh all three counties, uh and then we also asked for donations, so. And that's where we've built up our savings a little bit now so that we can do this, we have some bigger projects coming up. You know, three hundred and seventy thousand dollar bridge, we have to have twenty percent of that in our account ahead of time. To do it, and then we get reimbursed it after it's the, the project is complete, so that's where these monies, what the money is for, it's it's sitting there, it's never been spent. Uh in in essence, it it gets spent, but then it comes right back. Um so it's always right there, and that's what it was for. So it's always right there, and that's what it was for, so we could maintain the trail to the level it should be maintained to. And all, we, like I said, we contract all of work, it's, the trail's been divided into three equal sections for each person. I hope that answers all the questions, or if anybody has any more.
Yeah, thanks, Pat. I just want to say a word about this resolution. I agree a hundred percent with what Matt said, this is an economic development tool. Can work to our advantage if it's passed. Lord knows, we need a lot of help economically up here, so. I I agree with what the motion was. Are you ready to vote? Any more discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution authorizing forgiveness of a loan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, thank you. We go to five I resolution, R eleven, twenty twenty-three, fourteen sixty, adoption of the twenty twenty-four Ashland County debt levy.
Okay, so we go, this is basically our authorization to borrow one million six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. We do a debt levy, debt borrowing every single year. This does not include all of the bar, levying we're going to be doing. There's roughly another four hundred thousand that has already been approved by the County Board. It's things like the enterprise lease rental for a sheriff's department, for the the land purchase for a forester and such. So those are additional items that will be bor- borrowed on the debt levy for, but these are the capital item, the one million six hundred thousand is all the capital items.
Brad Ray, motion to approve.
This is Lauren Negro, I'll second that.
Motion Brad Ray to approve, seconded by Lauren Negro. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. For the five J, resolution, R eleven, twenty twenty-three, fourteen sixty-one. A resolution establishing compensation to be paid to Ashland County Supervisors. Discussion.
All right, so just as a point, the point of legality, before you guys talk. Any, any pay raise for an elected official in Wisconsin must, the resolution has to be passed before nomination papers can be taken out. So for the County Board, that's in December. And so this is, November is the last opportunity to make any changes. Just like next year, we'll be doing a resolution for clerk, treasurer, and registered deeds. But that has to be done before May, when papers are taken out for those positions. And then it cannot be changed until the end of that term. So just the point of legality now, so, anyhow.
Kathy?
Marty's first.
Mr. Marty Vtech, I move that we approve the Executive Committee's recommendation.
Kathy?
I'll second Marty's motion.
Discussion.
Lawrence?
I'm strongly opposed to this, I did not run for County Board for the P. I did some I, I kind of look at it more as a volunteer position, I, I'm on a lot of volunteer groups and, you know, Rotary Club and Knights of Columbus and all kinds of organizations like that, and, and none of them pay, and I think that we're doing this as a public service, not for the income. I would say probably my average meeting over the years probably runs about two hours long, and that equates to about twenty-five bucks an hour, which I think is plenty enough. And if anyone is running for County Board for the P, then they're doing it for the wrong reasons.
George?
Use your microphone, please. You can use that one up there, George.
This is George Bussay, motion to amend.
He's going to need a second.
Microphones, please.
So the motion to amend is as follows. Move to amend resolution number R eleven dash twenty twenty-three dash fourteen sixty-one. Substitute for the two paragraphs beginning, whereas the Executive Committee, using the following single paragraph as a substituted wording. Quote, "It is resolved that effective upon the swearing-in of the newly-elected Ashland County Board in the spring of twenty-four, that the per diem rate of compensation for Ashland County Board members shall be raised from a rate of fifty dollars for attendance of a County Board meeting to a rate of sixty dollars for attendance to a County Board meeting, and that this increase shall apply only to the duly constituted regular meetings of the Ashland County Board, and that compensation for all other meetings, including committee meetings, shall remain as previously established." So I'm looking to see if there's a second.
This is Lauren Negro, that I might, that'll second. If somebody will amend everything.
Gary?
Yeah, just a point of clarification from our administrator. Because this is an amendment, and it has a first and a second, does this need to abide by the two-thirds vote?
Or simple majority?
Simple majority.
Okay, thank you.
Matt?
I guess what I'd like to hear is the rationale for Y seventy-five, Y sixty, you know, how did we come up with those numbers?
George?
Okay, I, I perceive that there's some division among the council about what should be done here. And this is a really important role that is played by members of this council. And it's more like at least three or more hours that a person spends in just attending this meeting, transportation, prep time, it's probably way more than three hours, it basically amounts to minimum wage, which makes this role seem really not important.
Right.
And it's an important role. So I think this is symbolic, I chose sixty because it's just, you know, it's a twenty percent increase, I don't think the community object, it's a couple of hundred dollars extra per board meeting, it's just a couple thousand dollars a year. Seventy-five dollars is like fifty percent increase, I think we'll see about it in the paper. So I just think this is symbolic, I think is appropriate, and I think it says, for people that may want to run for this position, that it is important, because for, we have an absence of people who are willing to run for this role, and we need more of them.
Could I hear why the Executive Committee asked for seventy-five?
Okay.
That was, I was, speaking to Matt's answer, it was just the number that was put in the motion, I was the, the one who voted against that motion in the Executive Committee. I think Marty made the motion, and he just put that number in there to put something before the board. The other thing I was going to ask about George's amendment, though, is, is that going to be a problem for Sue? When you're, when you're doing payroll to determine which is a County Board meeting and which is a committee meeting, and you know, different rate of pay for each?
Could you use a microphone?
I'm used to not talking. On your vouchers, you put which meeting you're attending, so it, that won't be an issue.
Or Kathy?
I'd like to answer Clarence's comment about volunteering. I feel that the County Board Supervisors is a very important role if you're doing your job correctly. If you want to volunteer your wages, sign it back to the county. But we work very hard to get the right story going for the County Board. I've been on the board completing my twelfth year, I've never gotten a raise, and every other year, we give everybody raises in the county, but the County Board Supervisors have never gotten a raise since I've been on the board. It needs a raise, with the inflation rate that's going on, you guys, you deserve that. Thank you.
This is Lauren Negro, could I speak?
I got one more ahead of you.
Okay, thank you.
Louis?
Well, I'd just like to say, I don't think any of us are in here for the money, we're not going to retire off this money for this payment. And just an example, the people in the southern part of the county, the other meeting it took, by the time I left my house, had the meeting come back, it was five hours. By the time I drive all the way up, drive all the way back, so, and that's fine with me, I, I'm not in this for the money, so sixty, seventy-five dollars won't make any difference.
Go ahead, Laura.
Um, every year when I go down to County's Association, I ask everybody I talk to what they get paid per board meeting. We're already among the highest, there's one county, and I don't remember offhand who it is, because most of them are answering forty-five dollars per meeting. But there's one that gets fifty-five. I, I too am here for, this, this is public service, the word in itself says you are being a servant to the public. If we wanted to actually make this so more people would run, we'd change these meetings so that they would be in the evening, like a lot of other governmental entities do, so that way people who have a nine to five, or eight to four, or whatever, would be able to attend. I really don't think we need anything at all, but I know, as George said, I can feel that there's, there's this unrest about this whole pay situation, so I'd rather see, okay, the County Board meetings are quite a bit longer sometimes. So, okay, that, a ten dollar bump, that, that would be more palatable to me than seventy-five. But we also have to take in this, to consideration those that are putting more time in, those ones are also getting, getting mileage, so Dan, what is the current mileage reimbursement rate?
Sixty-two cents.
Do we know?
Sixty-five cents.
Okay, you know, so it's not just that we're getting, you know, some of us are getting paid the per diem, but also mileage. You know, us in the city, I, I know, we're closer, I get it. I appreciate that we have online too, so if, if it's taking up people's time, they also have the option of being online. That, that saves a bunch of time, but that means you don't get the mileage. I really don't think we need anything else, but like I said, George's motion is way more palatable than seventy-five.
Kathy?
I'd like to call a roll call vote on this one.
We have to vote on, on the amendment first.
Yep.
All right, call the question.
Please, the voter calling the question.
Yeah, we have to vote on the call question.
Okay, let's vote on the call question.
Are you, are you still requesting a, um, roll call for this?
Yes.
Okay.
Microphone, please. Calling the question. Weiner. Murdig.
Yes.
Ellifson.
I'm sorry, can you explain what I'm
We're not, we're not voting on the amendment itself, we're just voting on whether we're calling the question or not.
Yeah, Mr. Ellifson.
And that doesn't have to be a roll call vote, I don't think.
It doesn't have to be, Kathy requested.
You want a roll call on calling the question?
Yeah.
What does that mean then?
All right, so that, they're, calling the question means any debate. So yes vote means to your
Yes, and debate, yes.
McKenzie.
This is on the amendment, the answer is
No.
It's calling the question on the amendment, which, okay, yes.
Negro.
Yes.
Metzener.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Kinney.
Yes.
Whoofall.
Yes.
Frannick.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes, yes.
Stender.
Yes.
Berlin. Miranda.
Yes.
Bussay.
Yes.
Vtech.
Yes.
Huber.
Yes.
Shooty.
Yes.
Carl. Twenty, twenty yes, pass.
Okay, so now you're on Mr. Bussay's amendment, because he called the question, there's no more debate. So yes vote means you're voting for Mr. Bussay's amendment, and no vote means a vote against him.
Can you guys use your mics, please?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, because you just called the question, there's no more debate on Mr. Bussay's amendment. So now you have to go straight to voting for it. And a yes vote would be to vote for his amendment, a no vote would be to no, not vote for it.
It would be an amendment to raise it.
Right, it would be the sixty dollars.
Yeah. Thank you, Dan, for repeating that.
Bill, this is a roll call vote?
Yes.
Question? This is a vote to approve or disapprove the amendment, after which, if amended, we go back to voting on the basic resolution.
Right, you vote on the resol- yeah, so this is an amendment to the resolution, if it passes, then you have to vote on the, the resolution as amended.
Okay.
Yeah, Kathy requested. And so, but once you vote on this, you can debate on the, on, on the original resolution.
And to, and to the, Dan, excuse me, but to the people laughing on the other side of the table, you can tell there are still questions people have, and that's why we're trying to be very clear with what we're doing, so please don't laugh over there that somebody's asking a question, thank you. Okay, let's go.
Murdig.
No.
Ellifson.
No.
McKenzie. Negro.
Yes.
Metzener.
No.
Campbell.
No.
Ray.
No.
Kinney.
No.
Whoofall.
Yes.
Frannick.
Can you guys use your mics?
Yes.
Stark.
No.
Stender.
Yes.
Berlin.
No.
Miranda.
Yes.
Bussay.
Yes.
Mika, absent, Vtech.
No.
Huber.
Yes.
Shooty.
Yes.
Carl.
No.
Weiner. Eight yes, twelve no.
So the amendment failed, and so now the original resolution stands for up or debate, or if you guys want to vote on it, you can.
Now we're voting on the original resolution, right?
Yes, we have a motion and second.
Matt?
Yeah, I want to just make a comment that I agree with Clarence's comments about raising this, I don't think we really need it. I, you know, from what I'm hearing is it was just kind of a swag as far as what it should be, I don't hear any reason other than, you know, a feel of importance. And I, I don't think we need to have that feeling come to us by money, and I think fifty dollars is adequate. Obviously, none of us are going to become wealthy doing this, and whether it's fifty or seventy-five, it's all the same, so I, I would say, don't support this.
Gary?
Yeah, anybody who knows me knows where I stand on this, I made myself perfectly clear in the past, and I'll make it clear after the Executive Committee, and again today. I have never, I have sixty-one years of elected office, and I've never done any of it for the money, in the County Board, there were four years in the past where I didn't take per diems for half the year, that was my right. I've never done it for the money, and I never will. I, I am adamantly opposed to raising the per diem, and that's just my opinion. Um, I, I am adamantly opposed to raising the per diem and that's just my opinion.
George.
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, um, but I believe I've seen the data for Bayfield County. It's a hundred dollars per minute. So.
Yeah, that's correct.
This is not really a high level of compensation.
Well, yes. Bayfield County has a lot fewer board members than we do. I think they have thirteen.
Eleven, I think.
So they serve, th- they're, they're more of a part-time position, if you want to say that, because they serve on a lot of committees and they're involved a lot. Th- there's a lot more time involved.
Go ahead, Liz.
I myself, you know, would not mind the fifty dollars to stay. But I'm, like many, I'm not here for the money, but you know, I don't speak for everybody else that is in our community that may think about running. And might be somebody that, you know, had to miss a day of work to get to meetings and everything. And if it is raised, you know, that sends a message to the public. You know, maybe that person would think about running and it's not like it's not for the money, but it's for the compensation. If they have to travel, if they have to get lunch, if they have to, um, amend their schedule for work. You know, it's the little things. And, you know, it's, it's sending a message, yes, that we are important and we know that our, our role to this community is important even without the raise. So I do support it. Thank you.
Pat.
This agenda bill did not include information on what other counties in Wisconsin pay supervisors. It doesn't include information on when Ashland County, you know, last provided raises or the compensation history with Ashland County. So there's a lack of information in the packet and there wasn't in the executive committee packet either. For us even to have the background to put, you know, any potential raises in context. So on the one hand, I appreciate someone saying, I've been here twelve years and we've not had raises. But I don't know the raise history and comps prior to that. I wish we had more information so we could look at that um, as we consider these decisions. I'm not going to support a raise at this point because I just don't have enough information on the history of raises so that I could explain to someone if I'm doing doors, you know, why I thought a raise was appropriate. Um, the other thing I think we're all aware of is that even though there's a lot of jobs in this country, um, the vast majority of Americans are feeling a lot of economic angst with the, um, inflation we've had and the economy, et cetera. Um, and until I think we've done the best that we can do as a county to keep taxes in check um, and make things better, I think that's our first obligation and I, we've made improvements certainly in the last few years. But until we do some other things, I'm just not comfortable with any raises.
Larry.
This is my twenty-eighth year on the county board and when I was first elected, our per diem was thirty-five dollars a day and we got no, we got, it was a per diem and whether we de- attended one meeting or two or three meetings in a day. Um, that was raised to fifty dollars. I'm going to say probably the second or third term. So it's been probably twenty, eighteen, twenty years that we've been getting fifty dollars a meeting. So it's been longer than twelve years for me, Kathy. But I, you know, I, I, again, I will just reiterate that I'm against raising us.
What? Go ahead, Laura.
Just going to reiterate a couple of points and then, um, kind of dovetail on Liz's. Um, again, uh, we're one of the highest paid boards, as there is. Um, people who put in more time get paid mileage. Not in support of raising this. And if we really wanted to show people that this was an important job, we would move it outside of regular business hours to allow other people to run. Nobody is going to come for seventy-five dollars either. The difference between fifty and seventy-five is just, it, I get it, 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 it's a little more, but it's, it's negotiable. If we want to show people this is important, we'll move it to when more people can attend.
Mike.
Motion to call for the question. We all heard this how many times?
And the motion to call the question. Do we have a second?
This is Laura.
Second.
Second.
One second.
Or Blake. Blake can have it.
The motion and the second call the question. You have to have the vote and call in the question. Do we roll call?
No.
Do we need a roll call or no?
No.
All of the favorites calling the questions. Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Do you know? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we're voting on the original resolution, R eleven, twenty, twenty-three, fourteen, sixty-one, which had raised the per diem from fifty to seventy-five dollars per meeting.
Roll call, please.
This is a roll call.
Yes.
This is to approve the resolution as presented, correct?
So, yeah, she's like, so again, a yes vote approves the raise and no vote says no.
Ellison.
No.
McKenzie.
No.
Negro.
No.
Metzinger.
No.
Campbell.
No.
Ray.
No.
Kenny.
No.
Who fall.
Yes.
Frannick.
Yes.
Stark. Stender.
No.
Berlin.
Yes.
Miranda.
No.
Bussay.
Yes.
Vtech.
Yes.
Huber.
Yes.
Chudy.
Yes.
Carl.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Murdick.
No.
Nine, yes, eleven, no. Mm-hmm.
So the resolution failed.
Okay, we'll go to five K adoption of the Ashland County budget and tax levy.
Okay, well, we have Mike and Steve on the line. So, um, let's see if I can get this bigger so I can read it. Okay, so this is mostly the same budget that was pre- presented to the county board and, and to finance committee earlier. Um, down here, you'll see the changes that were made. The ones in the yellow are ones we had to um, do after we showed the county board. Uh, like we didn't get the airport information in until a week ago. So that's in there. Finance committee agreed to use ne- to do uniquely Wisconsin with ARPA money. So that's in the budget. Um, and then there's a bunch of small, just smaller adjustments that you can see there. Um, I am going to ask that, uh, somebody offered amendment. Um, GIS just got a grant this week and I, um, either, I think it was yesterday. Um, for fifty thousand dollars, it's fifty thousand seventy-seven dollars. And that's to cover next gen nine-one-one for GI, the GIS portion. So I am going to ask that, um, the original submission that she made for GI, GIS was two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six, five, six, eighty-eight with revenues of turns forty-eight dollars over in revenues. Um, so I'm going to ask that you amend that to three hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred in expenses and three hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred in reven- revenues. So it, it offsets each other. It's just applying the grant to GIS. Um, but yeah, I'll take questions first before we do anything else.
What?
Yeah, I have a question about uniquely Wisconsin.
Yes.
Uh, I believe that's a TV show and we'd be paying them sixty thousand.
Yeah.
I, that's, that's a big chunk of change.
It's more than a TV show. It's, um, Discover Wisconsin comes up here. Um, they, they do film three segments. Um, they also do a bunch of podcasts. They do a bunch of marketing. And they give us the, all the film, including the, the B film.
Yeah, I, I realize we get the B film, but I mean, we don't have an editor to do anything with that. I, I guess my concern is, is that I understand what it's supposed to do and how it can do some things. Um, but I, I'm wondering if we aren't better off, if we're going to spend sixty thousand dollars on tourism, um, that we can do something that airs more than just twice on a TV station and do something internally. So I guess I'm,
doesn't.
I'm not in support of this.
It doesn't air only twice. They do a bunch of digital marketing too. Um, I can tell you, every county that's done it has seen a big payback. If you, more tax revenue come in than they out, than they outlay and the money just keeps coming because people are going to continue watching this stuff online.
We've done this in the past and, you know, I, I, I think they used to allow you to split. You can split with another county so that instead of sixty thousand, you're spending thirty thousand and you'd get fifteen minutes. They get fifteen minutes. I, I, I guess to me, I'm just having a hard time accepting that this is a, that we're going to get the return on the investment, I guess is my way of saying it.
Well, I guess all I can say is that every county that's done it has gotten their return on their investment within the first year. Um, I mean, Price County just signed up for it. Back down, I just saw their video not too long ago on whatever CBS, whatever it is. So, and they're starting to see that too now. Um, and they're pushing their, their counties. Every, like I said, every county has seen a big jump in tax revenue as after, after this air. They've seen, and it's continued and continued because people nowadays, younger people especially, they do go to tourism websites and they do look at the video. They don't respond to literature like you and I might have. They want the video. And so with this video out there, they can go out and they see, see the story. And the story, and what they're trying to do with this is they're not just doing this typical tourism thing. They're trying to concentrate on unique individuals within the county to try to tell a story about the county, about who the county is and what it is. They're also trying to, they're focusing on businesses to try to help, to help foster economic development. So what do we do with that B film? Well, one chamber of Congress can certainly use it for their marketing efforts. But, um, AADC can also use it. They can put together professionally, professionally filmed fi- video and use it marketing to get more businesses in town. Because again, they want to see something splashy. They don't want to see, you know, a, a trifold piece of paper. Um, this is really a huge marketing tool and economic development tool.
So our tax increase that we would expect is in the room tax or in the sales tax? Because our rooms are pretty much full most of the time anyhow.
Right.
Unless we add motels, we're going to have a hard time adding to our room tax.
Well, yeah, it, it, the county would see the money in sales tax. But the rest of the county would see them, our businesses would see an increased business. And yes, our rooms are filled in the city, which is a good problem. And more demand means more, you might get another hotel. Um, that's the reality. Prices keep going through the roof for hotel rooms here. Somebody's going to build another hotel. It's that simple. Um, so yes, this is an economic development piece and a tourism piece. And again, every county has done it. He's seen a huge jump in revenue. And honestly, the whole package put together would be three times that than what we're, than what WCA's cut with Discover Wisconsin.
Bill.
This is Bill. Um, is there money in the budget for a full-time grant writer?
All right, there's money in contingency for a full-time grant writer. Yes. So Steve, we have what, roughly four hundred thousand in contingency?
Uh, yeah, I believe it's, uh, if you look at the bottom of the sheet there, Dan, it's, I wrote it on there. I think it's three eighty-seven.
Yeah.
Ish. Yeah, three eighty-seven.
So of that three hundred and eighty-seven dollars in contingency, which is money that we haven't
allocated.
allocated to you now. We have, we have a hundred thousand dollars earmarked for a grant writer. And we have fifty thousand dollars earmarked for a s- a space and security study. Um, now, as a space and security study, the board can vote on it later, at a later date. But the money is earmarked in the contingency for that.
Yes, Mike.
I just looking, I want to, uh, comment again on the, uh, law enforcement uh, reduction for the tunnel appoints. Uh, you see where a hundred thousand dollars came out of the contingency for that. And I mentioned it in other meetings and I guess this is the place to mention it. Um, in our book of responsibilities for the county board committees, it says that the law enforcement committee shall make recommendations for the yearly budgets and expenditures of the sheriff in jail, and we did not do that. That was not, that was through the, uh, law enforcement committee.
Any more discussion? Bill.
Uh, question for Mike. Do you want to add it back in?
Yeah, yes. I'd like to see that hundred thousand dollars. Uh, I added back in rather than it's on the last page. It says decrease from the contingency, a hundred thousand dollars.
Gary.
Yeah, uh, just to, to refresh everyone's memory, in case somebody's forgotten. This issue of the point law enforcement's come up three times. Came up to the county board, came up to the finance committee. Three times it's been voted down. So make all the motions you want, but this, this issue's been brought up three separate times and it's been voted down.
Wait. Within our, uh, Ashland County Board of Supervisors handbook, under law enforcement, it says what the duties of that committee are on page eighteen. And it says, shall make the recommendations for the yearly budgets, expenditures for the sheriff, and we did not do that. So we did not follow our supervisor's handbook.
Should point out that PPL, last year PPL denied it.
More discussion. Liz.
I have a few questions. Um, we talked about the ARPA funds, um, and I'm going to go through a couple of different questions.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Okay, so the ARPA dollars, I want to know, you know, where are we at with that? And the opiate funding, if we know anything about that and how that would help our budget in the future. And, uh, one main question I have is that are the taxes going to be increased or decreased? And, or stay the same and how much?
Okay, uh, so we'll go through the first one first, last one first. The mill rate's going to be five twenty-three, which is roughly a dollar less than last year. So I think it was six-ten last year. So it's going to be five twenty-three this year. So, so mill rate will go down. Now, as Mr. Metzinger can tell, explain better, that doesn't mean your taxes are going to go up or down. It's all based on whatever your assessment is. And so your taxes will go down relative to your neighbors and your current assessment. Um, also, we don't control the other taxing districts. We don't control what the school does or the cities or towns do. So how it affects you is different, but based on your assessment, your, the mill rate's going to be lower for the county. So that's easy. Um, and I'm sorry, so the ARPA money, we have one point one million budgeted in the, in the budget. Um, that's for the building repairs that we approved earlier. That's for uniquely Wisconsin and then we have extra in there for what's probably going to be overages in the construction. Uh, that'll leave us with a little less, four hundred thousand dollars in ARPA money that we have to allo- that we have to allocate by the end of next year. And we have to spend by the end of twenty-six. So, um, I'm of course going to bring the finance committee one-time projects to do that. So we don't, so, because we can't depend on the money. It's going to be gone. So we'd want to do one-time things with it. Um, as far as the opiate funding, uh, that's, it's, it's limited. Uh, some, some of the settlements are for seven years, some are for fifteen, some are for twenty. Uh, we're still getting settlements coming in. Um, one just, uh, McKesson just settled, so we'll be finding out that amount in the near future. Um, and I know that the bankrupt organizations like Purdue Pharmaceuticals. Um, that's still going to bankruptcy court. And so we don't know what those settlements are going to look like. Um, we have to remember, whatever we do with that opiate funding, the money is going to go away. So it's not a long-term fix. It's a patch. Um, and there, there are multiple, multiple needs. Um, I know we approved, um, H H S doing a transition house. Uh, they're still working out the costs on that. And so we don't know exactly how much we'll have left because we don't know, we're not full, fully sure of the costing for that. Um, the sheriff's department applied for a grant with the state, from the state opiates money to expand the MAT program in the jail. Hopefully we get that and that'll, that way we'll be able to provide Suboxone and other treatments in the jail. So people are addicted or at least are on the path to recovery. And then that's where the H H S program comes in after that. Um, but there are other uses for it. Um, you know, you know, the sheriff is talking about hiring a part-time deputy for interdiction. Uh, that would be a short-term fix, but interdiction is certainly something that we need to consider too. Um, you know, there's other things like drug sniffing dogs that are eligible. And again, that's interdiction portion that helps right away. And there's, there's a whole bunch of other treatment ends on the other side. So. Or I, I, Joe Doe P P L E is going to look at this again at their next meeting. To find, and to find out what else is, and I believe H H S is going to continue to look at the issue too. To see what other opportunities are out there. And at some point, I think the two committees should talk and figure out how they want to spend the rest of the money. So I'm sorry, did you have anything else?
I thank you and the taxpayers. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, that's kind of.
Dan, I just had one thing for the opiate money when Charlie Byers or Charlie Ortman and I went down to W C A and got the resolution for this.
Yep.
I would like to take a small amount of that money, three to four hundred dollars and put it. The county nurses used to come down to the county fair and just maintain, um, medical support if somebody needed it. And I'd like to spend, save like four hundred dollars of that money to do a certified person to go down and do, um, medical care down at the county fair for three days.
Um, I don't, what you're describing does not fit under the settlement guidelines. It has to be related to opiates, whatever we do. The nurses could come down and hand out, um, Narcan.
Narcan.
They could do that, but, but they can't come down and just provide standard medical care with the money.
Narcan would be working.
So, and then of course purchasing Narcan is an eligible expense. So.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Bill.
This is Bill. Um, our salary increases figured into this budget for two thousand and twenty-four. And if so, what is the amount of increase?
Uh, yes, they are figured in there. Um, and you just, the county board just set the rate of increase a few resolutions ago. So everybody who except, um, contracted employees like me and the deputies. Um, and those who are on other work arrangements like, um, Bruce Blakeman is a contracted employee too. Um, everybody gets two, two and a half percent raise or one step. Um, in the wage scale, um, rewarded like that because there are two employees. Who are at the very top of the wage scale. So they're not eligible to get another step. So we wanted to make sure that those two employees were also included in it. The other thing the resolution said is that you have to be employed with the county for a year before it becomes effect. So if you've been here on January first twenty-three, you get the raise January first twenty-four. You start at March first twenty-three, you get it March first twenty-four. And that's so everybody gets on the same cycle. So it's two and a half percent for everyone.
Um, I, I have a, just a comment on, uh, what Mike Stark said. Um, I don't know how many times I talked to the chairman of the island. At meetings, he was sitting right back in the corner. I talked to him and I said, you guys have to get your heads together and come back with a proposal that we can live with. And he agreed. More than once I told him that. What happened? They come back and they wanted more. So as far as I'm concerned, I, I never was in favor of cutting them off a hundred percent. But it came out in the press that we refused to negotiate. That's just not true. So, uh, I, I don't, I, Gary said this to me before, I don't know how many times. And apparently ninety percent of the people are opposed to it. Um, I'm not going to try to intimidate anybody or convince somebody how to vote, but, uh, all I can say, Mike, is they certainly had their chance and they blew it. Yeah.
Are we ready for a motion to approve the budget?
Yeah, I would like to get one, just one friendly amendment. Uh, the grant I mentioned earlier, um, it, right, yeah. Oh, well, I guess you can make a motion to approve the budget. They won't do it. Yeah. Thanks, Brad.
This is Pat. I'll make a motion to approve the budget as presented.
Brad Ray will second and offer a friendly amendment to include the fifty thousand dollar grant for G I S.
That, that offsets, it offsets each other on revenue expenses and sue to put it in the correct account.
Do we have to vote on the amendment first?
All right, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, I, I accept the friendly, but I'll also second it.
Okay.
Point of order. I do believe you need to vote on that.
Yeah, I think you have to vote on it.
Pardon?
I think you have to vote on it. Just a voice vote.
On the amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a friendly amendment on the floor. To approve the, uh, what is it? Fifty, fifty thousand?
Yeah.
Fifty thousand four seventy-seven. Fifty thousand.
Okay. We'll vote on the friendly amendment. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Or she carries. Thank you. Now we'll vote on the budget itself. Roll call.
You don't have to.
You don't have to listen.
Okay, then we'll just do a voice vote.
Mike, sir.
I know.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do a roll call.
All right, this is a vote on the budget as amended.
Mackenzie.
No.
Negro. Laura.
What did she have to say about?
Yep. She said she'd be back in a few minutes.
Metzinger.
No.
Campbell.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Kinney.
Yes.
Kufal.
No.
Frannick.
No.
Stark. Stendor.
Yes.
Berlin.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Busay.
Yes.
Vtech.
Yes.
Huber.
Yes.
Chudy.
Yes.
Carl.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Murdig.
Yes.
Ellison.
Yes.
Laura Negro.
She should have a phone in the throne room. Should increase the salary to seventy-five bucks.
Fourteen yes, five no.
Yeah, okay.
So the budget passed fourteen to five.
What was the count?
Fourteen to five.
Fourteen to five.
Yeah.
Okay, the Addison County budget has been approved. We'll go to five K. No, excuse me, five L. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-three, fourteen sixty-two to authorize sale of the Lori Jean Zach Center building to the Lori Jean Zach Center.
Okay, so this has been approved by both P P L E and exec committee. Um, and could, I believe Kathy Schraffnagle's on the line. So if we could get permission or somebody could make a motion to allow her to speak.
I'll make the motion.
Who made the motion?
Hello.
Ron.
Ron Cinder made the motion to approve and.
Not too loud.
What? Wait.
Second.
True, true, right?
Too loud. Kathy Schraffnagle will speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, I, I also want to point out, um, Mr. Stark paid for the building with this dollar right here.
Yeah, you did.
I did. I paid for it. Donating it.
Okay, so, um, I guess Kathy, would you like to talk?
Uh, hello, um, thank you for that dollar. I appreciate that a great deal. It saved me a trip to Ashland. So I, I guess I would want to know, um, are there any questions for me?
Pat. This is Pat. If the county sells it to you for a dollar and the county no longer owns it, are there any? Are there any considerations as far as applying for grants or other funding? Because the county would no longer own it. Um, is there any downside to that?
No, actually what I'm finding is an upside. Um, because we now own or will own the property and the building itself. Um, there are definitely upsides. I can go back to rural development and things like that where, where.
Any more questions for her? Matt?
Yeah, when Frank Kempf was on the board and, and represented that area down there, I know there was a lot of discussion about the ownership of Lori Zach Center. And we had talked about transferring it and he came out and, you know, opposed it. Um, in the fact that there was grant funding that was available through our ownership. And they did some updates and repairs to the place down there. And I'm, I'm just wondering, I, I'm, whether we sell it or keep it is not as important to me as will it continue to be functional as this transfer takes place? And, you know, we do quite honestly, little, uh, on health and human service side of things in the southern part of the county. And, you know, if, if this helps fulfill some of our obligations down there, I, I would like to see us keep it. If it presents a greater chance for them to get funding federally or from other agencies. So I, I guess if you could answer, well, you know, do you see this affecting your abilities to advertise and get grants?
Only in a positive way. Um, when I looked into grants last year, um, and I talked to, I don't remember exactly the name of the person at the county. What was available at the time was block grants, which the county would control, of course. Um, not that I think you would do us a disservice by controlling a block grant, but that was basically all that was available to us. And now I have, um, done some research and other grants that, uh, if we own it and, and can build up a maintenance fund, uh, because that's one of my concerns is a maintenance fund. Um, I, it, it looks like we would have a better chance to do that. And yes, business will continue, has continued throughout all of this. It's, it's a wonderful place to be. You should come visit sometime.
Right, Marty. Uh, this is Marty Vtech. I was involved with the Lori Jean Zach Center building since it was, since it was built. And I can, I can say that the, that the Lori Jean Zach Center has done a wonderful job for forty years. And I expect that they will continue to do that because the people are good and won't let them do anything else anyway. So thank you for all these.
That right.
Well, I have the pleasure, that's my, in my district, and I have the pleasure of working for them once a week. And they're a great bunch of people and it's in need, in need of a lot of repairs, like the garage is totally shot and it's a big expense. And if they can get more money this way, it's definitely best to do it this way.
Mike.
Motion to adopt this resolution.
Mike Stark second. We have a motion to adopt. And Mike Berlin seconded by Mike Stark. All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Or she carries.
Amazing. Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Just a quick question. Can anyone tell me what the next step is? What do you need me for, us for, possibly my board? What happens to get this transitioned into a different name then?
Yeah, um, Kathy, I'll give you a call later. Kathy, I'll talk to you later. Oh, she's frozen. She's frozen. Actually, uh, okay.
Mike, motion to go into closed session.
Have a motion. We want a closed section. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ron Cinder. All those in favor.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Oh, Kathy, I'll, I'll talk to you later.
Thank you.
You have to read, Kathy, you have to read this. You have to read the motion.
I know what you're talking about. We don't read that until it's motion to be read. Okay, we have a motion and a second during the closed session. The board committee may entertain a motion to move in or out of closed session pursuant to the nineteen point eight five one G. Conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which is likely or to become involved. This is in regards to the land sold taxes. Now, can we vote?
Yeah, roll call is required.
Negro.
Yes means to go in the closed session.
Metzinger.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Kinney. Kufal.
Yes.
Frannick.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Stendor.
Yes.
Berlin. Miranda.
Yes.
Busay.
Yes.
Vtech.
Yes.
Huber. Chudy.
Yes.
Carl. Weiner.
Yes.
Murdig.
Yeah.
Ellison.
Yeah.
Mackenzie.
Okay, um, Lori, can you please?